Okay. Good morning. The City of Boston Building Board of Appeal Hearing for June 23rd is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. Information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the Public Notices page of the city's website, the Boston Building Board. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representative of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on appeal, on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon. And I think you can see that on the graphic in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand because I noticed there are a couple of people on by telephone. So please, once again, press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address for us and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address that you're interested in into the record. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Mr. Fortune will now begin with the call of the list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of February 25th, 2020 and March 10th, 2020. We need a motion.
I'm not hearing Mr. Fortune.
I'm sorry. It looks like we were muted.
Okay, I'm going to do it again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of February 25th, 2020 and March 10th of 2020. May I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I ask the Board members, please, when you make a motion or you second, please follow up with your name and then if you are in opposition, follow up with your name too. Okay? So that at least, because it's sometimes difficult for me to discern people's voices. Okay, sorry, Mr. Fortune, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the next order is, are there any deferrals or withdrawals of any cases that were speaking today?
Is anybody on the line? In, is the applicant on the line?
Madam Chair, I believe there's no deferrals or withdrawals, so I'm going to call the first case.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm seeing a couple of raised hands. If we could just hold on a minute, this is Ed Coburn. I'm seeing a couple of raised hands.
Okay. Mr. Fortune, I'm sorry, I kind of missed what you said. Was that a motion for, was that a request for a withdrawal?
No, no. Madam Chair, I usually call into the deferrals or withdrawals. And just waiting to hear back if anybody is deferring or withdrawing their project today.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Coburn said there's somebody waiting to talk.
Okay, Mr. Corbin, can you make sure that we hear from the people who are interested in deferring or withdrawing?
Say, to speak in favor of my unit, do I don't raise my hand?
What is the address you're interested in? Once again, what is the address that you're interested in?
Hello, can you hear me?
What is, what address are you interested in?
56 Byron Street, the one that's currently on the screen.
Okay, are you going ahead with your project?
Yes, we are. The attorney that is representing the project should be on here as well. I heard him, I heard him identify himself.
And what is his name?
Mark Chapdeline.
Okay.
Madam Chair, right. Madam Chair, right now, we're only calling deferrals and withdrawals. I haven't even called the first case in for the record.
The attorney is unmuted. Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Everybody who is interested in this case, either in support or in opposition, please follow the instructions and raise your hands for comments if you're so interested in doing it. Remember that if you are connected by telephone, press star three to raise your hand. Please, who is speaking, the applicant is attorney, put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, the Mr. Secretary hasn't read the case into the record. He was still in the process of seeking if there was any request for deferral or withdrawal.
Okay.
Are they deferring or withdrawing?
They're going ahead.
All right, so let me call it in for the record. Calling BOA 101-8028, 56 Byron Street. This is to extend living space post-construction approval of a finished living space in the basement. The finished area includes a bathroom, family room, office laundry. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name's Mark Chapdeline. I represent Bostonian Construction Services and Anthony Franny, the builder. I'm here on the line with Stephen Winiger, the owner of Unit 1, which, which this affects.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
Yes, so this is a post-construction request. The area had been completed pursuant to a two-family conversion into condos. The lower level was completed with, there were some, some communication issues with inspectional services as far as whether it had been approved or not. But in the end, the property was ultimately sold, sold to Stephen Winiger, that condo unit, and it included the lower level, which included a living room area, a office area, which has since been converted to a laundry room and a bathroom. The area, as a result of that area being included, the floor area went up to .943. So we're seeking a variance for the excessive floor area so that Mr. Winiger can, can go ahead and use the basement level for non-sleeping purposes. It's, it's not built out in a manner which somebody could sleep down there due to egress, but as far as a television room or something of that nature, that's what he's seeking to do with it.
We have a couple of questions. What's the floor ceiling height? Is it connected to the first floor directly? Are there any facilities for the second unit in the space?
The, I'll start, I guess, with the last one. The, the, the bottom floor has a storage area for the second unit in the rear of it. And I had sent over the plan of the, the bottom floor. I don't know if that's on the screen or not. I'm having trouble clicking into the screen here. But it's, so that, yes, there is a small portion there. It's connected directly, the first unit connects directly to the basement through a stairwell that, that goes down there, which I believe has a door on the top and bottom. But Mr. Winiger can probably tell us more about that. And what was the third question?
What is ceiling height?
I believe it's eight feet is, is the ceiling height, though I do not have that exact number. I apologize.
So hold on a second, Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
The drawings are adequate. It does not show the ceiling height on the, on the drawings, but if it's eight feet, somewhere around there, that's certainly okay. Two families, the minimum required is.
Okay. Anybody here to speak of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, this is Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. We held an abattoir meeting on February 6th and there were no concerns from the abattoirs during the committee process. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Stephen Winiger and I'm the owner. Would it be appropriate for me to speak at this time?
I do hope you're in support of your own project.
Yes, ma'am, I certainly am.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's, let's save the time for, for a not, another interested party. Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Corbin, you seeing any hands up raised?
I do not see any additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm making motion to approve. Marker.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 104-7183, 30 Conker Street. This is a new kitchen addition to the rear of an existing home. A new kitchen and half bath on the first level, a new bath on the second level, a new air conditioning and associated work. The violation is Article 62, Section 8. The rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. This is Ken Nolan of 30 Conker Street, the applicant.
Please tell us what your, and your, your home address is 30 Conker Street?
Correct.
By anybody, are you representing yourself?
We're representing ourselves.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
We're extending to the back of our house to accommodate having a living room, kitchen, and dining room on a single level. Right now, it's split and then adding a bedroom, converting the, the living room on the second floor into a bedroom and adding a bedroom on the second level of the extension. We lived in Charleston for 10 years and have a couple of kids and we like to stay. And we also tried to move the bathroom on the first level, which goes into the kitchen, out into the extension so that, you know, you're not going to the bathroom and the kitchen.
Okay. How, Mr. Erlich?
The drawings are fine.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support. An abattoir meeting was held on February 11th, lightly attended by neighbors, and support was heard at that time. We've also sent a couple of letters to the Board in support of the proposal as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in support? Is there anybody to speak in opposition? Hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, I'm making motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Joe Rogan, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 104-7900, 1 Trenton Street. This is to construct a new roof dormers to create living space at an existing third floor and new exterior deck at third floor level above an existing two-story rear L. The new front dormer facing the street and new rear dormer facing the rear of the lot. Dormers create 108 square feet of new living space for the master bath and bedroom. The violation is Article 20, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, this is Ed Coburn, a call-in user number 18. If you could unmute him, I believe that's the applicant. If the host can unmute him.
Is that Keith Hensman?
Hello, my name is Keith Hensman, 47 Kemberley Street, and this is for 1 Trenton Street. And the, I represent the owners of 1 Trenton Street and they would like a new front-facing dormer and rear-facing dormer and a new deck that is on the roof of their existing two-story rear L.
Okay, and so the roof deck, so the dormers create 108 square feet of new living space? Is that what it is?
That's correct. It's approximately 30 square feet in the front and 75 square feet to the rear.
And tell us about the dimension of that rear deck?
So the proposed rear deck is approximately 130 square feet. And bear with me just a second and I can give you a, a plan dimension. It's approximately nine feet wide and approximately 12 foot 10 long.
And the size of the roof deck?
Approximately 130 square feet.
Oh, so 130 square feet, okay. And your violation was 21, 20 dash 1. Can you talk us through that, what's required and what are you proposing?
Yes, so we have a rear yard and well, we're, the rear yard required would be 15 feet and the existing rear yard is 4.6 feet. And this roof deck does not extend that non-conformity. In fact, it's further back from the rear yard. It's smaller than the existing roof, the footprint of the existing back L, the house.
Okay. Can you stay on for a minute, Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
The plans are fine.
Yes, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support. An abattoir meeting was held on February 13th, was lightly attended, and there were no issues at that time.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, this is Ed Coburn. I see one raised hand, an individual named Jason Thompson. I'm not sure if he's here to speak on this matter. Jason Thompson, who's unmuted.
Hi, hi, this is Jason Thompson. I'm the current homeowner. I was just unmuted in case I needed to answer the questions. Keith said I needed to say this, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no opposition, may I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, motion to approve.
Joe Rogan, second.
Is all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. You're all, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 104-3946, 493 Walnut Avenue. This is to construct a new garage addition to an existing single-family dwelling. The violation is Article 19, Section 1, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 20, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Seth Davis available? Is Seth Davis available? Hey, Mr. Davis, are you on? Mr. Davis, are you on?
He's, he's muted.
Okay?
Yeah, this is, sorry, I was having issues with the WebEx. This is Seth Davis of 493 Walnut Avenue. I'm the homeowner of, representing myself on this project.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing to do.
We're proposing an addition to the rear parking area of our house to include a new rear entrance and mudroom as well as a one-and-a-half-car garage. This is also going to include new landscaping and drainage improvements to address water issues in our basement.
Go ahead.
The site's currently an asphalt driveway and gravel parking area, which will be removed and replaced with a new structure and landscaping.
So tell us about your side yard because you have two violations, side and rear yard. What is required by code and what are you proposing?
So by code, we're required to have 10 feet on the side yard and I believe it's 16 on the side we're violating. We're a corner lot, so I believe the, the front and rears are a little bit confusing. What we're proposing is three feet for the side yard and six feet for the, the rear. the rear. The current house already violates, um, the current codes, so we would be increasing the violation. Uh, both abutters would be directly affected, have been involved in the design process and are in favor of the process of the project.
Okay, and, and both the abutters have, um, additional side and rear yard footage so that cannot completely impinge on them in some way?
Correct. Uh, the, a butter to our side yard has about 40 feet from the property line to their structure. I don't have exact measurement on the, on the rear yard, but it's a similar amount. And the addition will be not visible from, um, from the, the back, the backside of abutters.
Okay. Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
Uh, the drawings are fine.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Lindsay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant worked with the abutters to address the concerns that they had. They also received support from, um, Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this project.
Okay. Is there anybody else to speak in support?
Justin, you've been unmuted.
Uh, hello, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Justin McClair from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. Uh, the council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody interested in speaking in opposition? Are there any raised hands in opposition? May I have a motion?
Uh, Mark Erlich, I make a motion to approve.
Does it need design review?
Uh, sure, yes.
Is there a second?
Joe Rogiro, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-4278, 242 Napontet Avenue. This is an interior and exterior renovation, including new windows, new shingles, new, new kitchen and bathrooms, new walls and ceilings, new MEP systems, and construction of a one-story addition with full basement and deck at the rear of the home. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Murphy available to talk about this project?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Dara Murphy, a homeowner at 240 2 Napontet Ave., and we are representing ourselves.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing to do.
We are requesting permission to construct a one-story addition, the back of the house, for a first-floor bathroom, laundry room, and mudroom.
Okay, and tell us the use of the basement that you're proposing?
Uh, just additional unfinished basement space. Uh, there will be no living space or finished space in the cellar.
Okay, and, um, tell us about the deck, the dimensions of the deck?
The deck is five feet deep by 18 feet long.
Okay. Just please stay, stay available, Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
Uh, the drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Sandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, we'd like to go on record in support of the proposal. Um, we ran a full community process for that, including an onsite abutters meeting. Um, with full support from the abutters and no opposition from the Civic Association. Um, thank you.
When, when was the committee meeting? If you could put that on the record, please?
Yep, it was last fall.
It was in the fall, okay. Thank you. Um, anybody else to speak in support of this proposal?
Pardon me, if I could just point out that the, uh, abutters meeting was actually February 16th, 2020. It had been, the date had, was changed.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody to speak in opposition? Hearing none, may I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, I make a motion to approve, uh, BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Joe Rogiro, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Going to call the next case, calling BOA 104-0921, 23R Tunnel Wonder Street. This is to erect a glasshouse wood frame having a dirt floor for plant storage, a new structure to be attached to an existing shed. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, accessory building in the rear yard, and Article 65, Section 9, accessory building in the rear yard. The addition to the shed would exceed the 25% of the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, um, is the applicant, um, Robert Dickerson on? Or representative of Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, not, not right now, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yes, good morning, Madam. Hello, can you hear me?
Please put your name and address on the record.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've got a really bad connection, I am so sorry. Uh, my name is Robert Dickerson and I am the homeowner, um, of 23 Tunnel Wonder Street. And we have, have, uh, our, our situation is that we have built a greenhouse, or, and we're in the process of building a greenhouse. We, we were cited because the footprint of the structure that we are, uh, seeking to build exceeds the 25% um, uh, square foot allowance. I should say 25% uh, allowance for square foot structures by six feet. Uh, we're, we're six and a half square feet over the allowance. The structure, uh, allowance is 429 square feet, but our structure comes in at 435 square feet.
Okay. Okay, and this is just a, a regular greenhouse? I'm asking, is this a regu-, just a regular greenhouse?
I'm sorry, uh, could you say that again? I am sorry.
Uh, no problem, this is just a regular greenhouse, it's not one of those, uh, you know, uh, three-season rooms or anything like that?
No, it, it's a, it's actually a glasshouse. It's a house that is 80% glass, uh, with a dirt floor, and we use it to store plants, uh, that we, um, bring in over the winter months.
Okay.
And, um, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dickerson, please stay on the line, uh, as we proceed with the rest of the hearing. Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
Um, the, the plans are okay. I, uh, it's, it's clear, it seems clear that it's intended just for plants and, and storage. Um, certainly would be a different matter if there were any question of living space, but it doesn't appear that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Qua-Fam from Mayor's, uh, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held an onsite abutters on February 18th, and the following night they met with the Bloomfield Neighborhood Association and received support from that group as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we have a letter from Qua-Fam, as he just spoke, in regards to in support, but we also have a letter from Shawna Helton from Bloomfield Park in support of the project as well.
Thank you. Is anybody to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. This is Karen McCall. I'm an attorney who's been retained by abutters Mark and Victoria Nurse. They reside at 27 Tunnel Wonder Street. And just to clarify, they weren't able to participate in, in the neighborhood meeting. I guess they got a postcard and were invited to one, but they were not participants, and they do have some serious reservations, that's why they're opposing this. So I mailed in, I emailed in some supportive photographs.
While you're on the line, tell us what the reservations, what their reservations are.
Okay. First of all, I just want to start with, there is a use issue here. Um, although they're describing this as a greenhouse, uh, the reality is the prior structure, which is an accessory structure, um, you know, a shed, it's supposed to be a shed, but frankly, if you look at their, their submitted designs, it's very clear, um, it's, it's, could be used as a dwelling space, and, and they have concerns for that. It has a shower, it has a bathroom, it has what appears to be a kitchen sink and a bay window that will now have this view of an interior garden area. Um, if, you know, actually affixed to the exterior of this structure is a mailbox and a number, a mailing address number. So by all outward appearances, this little shed, actually, it could have an occupancy situation. So there's a real concern there. Um, in addition, the new little glass house that has been tacked on to this pre-existing structure more than doubles the impervious surface area, and there is already a drainage issue. Now, my clients have lived directly next door to the Dickersons for 25 years. Um, they can attest, and I've seen photographs, it is a routine habit of the Dickersons to have to put tarp over their unpaved driveway area because of the storm drainage issue that exists. Their basement, um, has some mild flooding. This is an issue. And this new structure is going to exasperate this pre-existing issue that hasn't been addressed. My clients weren't involved in any of the planning, their driveways are literally side by side. Um, and thirdly, just to recap, the use issue, the drainage issue, the third issue is, this project has unveiled a boundary property dispute. Um, my clients have lived there, like I said, for 25 years. They moved in approximately a month before the Dickersons moved in. They paved their driveway, they put up a new fence, they created a border guarding that runs, a garden that runs the entire length of their property. Um, the neighbors who have previously been longtime, uh, uh, you know, friends and neighbors, they have always both treated this border property, um, as my clients. And now it appears, as a direct result of this project, a survey was done and the Dickersons have asserted that, uh, approximately a foot and a half, it varies down the border length, um, doesn't belong to my clients. This is an issue that obviously needs resolve. I spoke briefly yesterday with an attorney representing the Dickersons. Um, we are both going to work very hard to avoid land court if possible, but what we're asking is that the Dickersons not be permitted to complete this project until the drainage issue is rectified. It's my understanding that a drywall drainage system is not, um, terribly costly, that it's, it's a doable solution, and I think my clients really do deserve the reassurance that the drainage issue isn't going to be increased, which it inevitably will unless the Dickersons are required to come up with this solution first. I also think some language that ensures that this dwelling, which really looks like a studio apartment that's being tacked on to, is, is not, it was never intended to have occupancy. And we really need reassurance that the purpose is going to be truly.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so, anybody else to speak in opposition? Now, I have a question, uh, from the ISD staff. Are inspectors going out to, um, to do site visits?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I'm asking, um, ISD staff?
Okay.
So, so, so is, I'm ask, of ISD staff, are inspectors going out to do site visits?
Okay. I'm sorry, are you, are you, uh, directing a question to me, um, um, Chair, Chairwoman?
No, no, sir.
Madam Chair, this is, uh, Ed Coburn from ISD. Could you repeat your question, there was a little bit of an echo?
Okay, is our, our inspectors going out for site visits?
We can do exterior site visits, yes.
Okay, so can we, um, I, I think that it's appropriate with this new information that two things happen. One is that an inspector, uh, uh, you know, um, double-check the information on this, uh, shed. We want to make sure that it's not a second dwelling unit. Um, and perhaps, um, given the, so, um, so at least that. The second thing, Mr. Erlich, do you think that this requires a site visit, or are you comfortable with what you've seen? We can't hear you.
Uh, are you?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, um, uh, in terms of the issues that were raised by the attorney, uh, it's true that the existing shed that's not my dog.
The dog, can you mute for a minute?
Okay. Uh, let me, let me continue. Uh, in terms of the, the existing shed, it's correct that the plans show that there's a bathroom, but in terms of the glasshouse extension, there is no indication that, um, first of all, that there, it's, it's an extension of the structure, but it's not a continuous space. So, and the door opens to, uh, away from, uh, the shed. So it would be pretty hard-pressed to, to, for it to be an issue of occupancy, and I would think if we were to approve this, we could, uh, add a proviso that it'd be limited for storage and, and garden use and plants. Uh, that's on that issue. On the property, uh, line, there's no plot plan here that I have, so I, I have no idea whether there is in fact a, a legitimate, uh, issue in terms of, uh, disputed property lines, and that would require, that would require a surveyor and, and, um, and I think, and resolution beyond what the, the drawings, uh, show, show us. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with the occupancy issue.
Okay.
I, I got a question, it's Joe Rogiro. I got a question, just to clarifika-, clarifying purposes. The variance they're seeking right now is because it's six feet over the 25% square footage threshold? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yep.
So if it was six square feet less, then they would fulfill that requirement?
They'd do it as a right.
Okay, just wanted to-
So the question that, that I have of Mr. Dickerson and, and Ms. McCall is, is there a way that you can solve this? Because, uh, Ms. McCall, you did state that the abutter did not attend any of the community meetings?
Um, if you may-
If I may?
If I may.
We have a question.
So this is a question for both Mr. Dickerson and Mr. McCall. Is, um, is it possible for you to solve your differences, um, to solve your differences without us getting involved? It might mean that, Mr. Dickerson, you move your, you decrease your, um, unit, your size of your, um, your greenhouse-
We have, we have to reduce the size to the square, if we can't get the variance. If we cannot get the variance, then we would move, uh, to, to reconfigure the footprint of the building, but you do, we have provided a surveyor's certified survey, uh, uh, plot plan as well as the architectural drawing, so everything, um, that we have given, um, should support not only the calculations, but the current, our gripping condition.
So I just want to make it clear to everybody that the Board of Appeal does not get involved in property line issues. We, you know, that, that belongs in another venue. We are just looking specifically at that greenhouse. And the question for the two of you is, can this be resolved without our intervention?
Um, Madam Chairperson, if I could, uh, it's- Madam Chairperson, if I may, it's, it's very clear to my clients that the way this has been packaged and handed to you is concerning. It's not necessarily forthright. The reality is, is these folks live very close to one another. That drainage issue that is pre-existing, this new structure doubles the existing structure. It's a real water drainage issue. It's visible already. There is, there is no refuting that, and it has not been addressed. So while I understand the underlying property dispute issue is, you know, beyond the scope of this hearing, I would ask that we put a hold on the completion of this project until these other issues are addressed.
So I guess the question for you, Mr. Dickerson, is, one, would you want to proceed with this case? Or two, would you like to withdraw it and figure out another way of getting your greenhouse built?
No, let me, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We have, we have no drainage issue that creates any flooding in our basement. What we have is a stop-work order that was placed on the, on the, on the project that caused us to not be able to reclaim our driveway. There's a stop-work order standing right now because of the complaint. And I will say this, that the complaints that came into Inspeccional Services by the attorney's client were so vindictive and so frequent that there were, there were seven visits from ISD personnel out here within a three-week period because of the, just the vindictiveness of what was done.
Okay, so let's stop right there, Mr. Dickerson. Let me ask you, is it possible for you to build this greenhouse without need for relief?
I, I can, I can reduce the square footage by six feet. It's going to take some work, but like I said, that can be done.
Okay, so then if you think you can do it, then perhaps your recourse is to withdraw the, withdraw this application, therefore you do not need relief from us. And, you know, look at alternate.
Okay, so if we withdraw the application, and I'm just understanding, versus if we go forward with the application with conditions, and this is what I would, I would like to say. If an Inspeccional Services representative can come out here, look at the situation, and tell us that what we need to do to rectify it, I would, I would be more than willing to do that. But I, I don't want to withdraw the application because I believe that the, the information provided by the attorney, the counsel for the, for the nurse family, is not giving you all of the accurate information. There is, to be clear, and this is something that she has mentioned in her letter, I should say, in her conversation today, about driveways being side by side. Our next-door, our next-door neighbors have an illegal driveway that, there is no curb cut. And so what happens is, any issue that they have with us as far as driveway to driveway, we are abiding by the code, by the zoning, they are not. So it is, it's a messy situation, but the thing is, we are looking at a six-foot overage on a square, on, on the, on the footprint of the building. And I would like to have, for I withdraw the application, have a...
Mr. Dickerson, can you hold on one minute? Tell us, is there dwelling space in that shed? Is somebody living in there, or could somebody live in there?
No, you can't live in there. This, this, in the shed, the shed was nothing more than storage, and it did have, and when we renovated the home, the primary structure, there is a sink in there, and there is a bathroom. Because, and it was just for the outside, for working outside. We are gardeners.
Hello?
And I would invite, and I would invite, the, the neighbors have misrepresented what they're, what they're telling you. I would invite and ask ISD to come and do a site visit before we agree to drop the request, the appeal.
Madam Chair, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Can I, can somebody from ISD put everybody, every visitor, everybody else on mute for a moment, please, while Mr. Olick speaks?
Yeah. My feeling on this is that the zoning relief requested only has to do with the six additional square feet, which is something I believe that we can handle as long as there is proviso that the use be limited to storage and gardening use only. I, we, the issue of the plot line boundaries is outside of the purview of this hearing, as you pointed out, and they, they need to sort that out separately. And if there's a drainage issue that's pre-existing, that again, is not something that is coming before us. All that's coming before us is a six square, six additional square feet. It, it is clearly not, based on the plans, it is clearly not something that can be used for occupancy. And so I would be prepared to make a motion to grant the relief with the proviso that it be, that the use be limited for storage and gardening use.
Okay, may I have a motion then to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Judge Carl.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Dickerson, and good luck. Thank you, Ms. McCall.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-3106-68 in the Ponton Avenue. This is to construct a single-story rear addition with roof deck to an existing two-family dwelling. The violation is Article 19, Section 1, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Ferrotaquino on the line? Is, is the applicant on the line?
Yes, I am.
You are? Excellent. Please put your name and address on the record, and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Yes, my name is Juan Ferrotaquino, and we are the owners of the 68 Necontra Avenue in Hyde Park. We would like to add a single story addition to the back of the house. They, we need to increase our square footage because we have children, and they're at an age that they would be better off by having their own rooms. The addition includes what would be the master bedroom and two bathrooms, and roof deck that also provides emergency egress for the apartment upstairs.
Okay. And what's, so what's the square footage of the rear addition? What's the proposed square footage?
It's 447 square feet. Basically, it extends towards the back of the house by about 29.9 feet, and the width is 15.17.
Okay, thank you. Can you please stay on, stay on? Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park.
Ohio threw me for a loop.
And, and a butters meeting was held on Monday, February 10th, with finding objections from the community. So we want to go on record in support of the proposal.
Because Trago's already called me. He was like, what? Dude, it's Trago.
Can people unmute?
Can we mute your phones, please?
Can we mute everybody else, please?
They haven't even asked me for anything. Like, I raised my hand to try to clarify something. They never called on me.
Hey, Jeff, is that you? Is that you, Jeff?
They just wanted to double-check.
Jeff, we can hear you. Jeff? Okay. Is anybody else to speak in support of this proposal? Please raise your hands. Is anybody interested in opposing?
Now, they can hire the attorney.
Madam Chair, before we go to the opposition, we do have one letter of support.
Okay. Can I have anybody who wants to speak in opposition, please raise your hand? Okay?
Discussionary, yes.
Hearing none. May I have a motion, please?
This is Mark Olick. I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPD design review.
Is there a second?
Ed DeVoe, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
We have the host put people's hands down. There's some hands up that I think have been up for a while.
They have to put their hands down. I can't do it from my end, and I've already checked both of them.
Yes, because I think, okay, next case, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Calling BOA 1044-560-50Oceola Street. This is to demolish an attic and build a full third-floor level and renovate second floor, and building, building plans provided. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Leon on the, on the, on the call, you heard?
Mr. Leon, you've been unmuted.
Hi, good morning. Sorry, there was a connection loss there for a minute. Hello, my name is Norberto Leon, and I'm the architect for the project.
Okay, please tell us what's being proposed.
We are removing the existing roof on the house and rebuilding it with a new roof to allow us to have more habitable space on the third floor. The existing roof right now, the slopes of the roof are very low, and it cannot be used very well as, as habitable space.
And what's the use of that space going to be?
It's going to be an extension of the second-floor unit that is on the, already there. So it's just bedrooms, a couple bedrooms, and some, and a, a new bathroom.
Okay. Please stay on the line. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The drawings are okay. Mr. Leon, what is the ceiling height in the, in the new proposed third floor?
It's, the lowest point is going to be seven feet, but it's actually a sloping roof that we're going to be doing. So it's going to be more than, more than seven foot six for the majority of the area.
Okay, but the low point is seven foot?
Correct.
Okay. The drawings are adequate, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn again with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. And a butters meeting was held on Monday, February 24th, with no opposition from the community. We wish to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Any hands raised in opposition?
Madam Chair, one minute to review for raised hands, please. Thank you.
There's a lot of stuff that the, you know...
Attorney McCall, you're going to speak?
Hey, are you, is somebody on the line to speak about Oceola Street in opposition?
There is, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry? If Karen, Karen McCall, if you're still having your hand raised, can you please, please not...
The property line, which means it's fixed in his favor. Which is, no, I will say, no, I would not...
If the host could mute, Ms. McCall, thank you. We've already, Madam Chair, we've sent chats to Attorney McCall to ask her to unraise her hand. She apparently hasn't seen them.
Okay.
No, I see no other raised hands at this time.
May I have a motion, please?
Mark Olick, motion to approve with BPD design review.
Is there a second?
Joe Roggero, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is a message to board members. Joe and Mark have been working very hard, so hopefully you'll give them a break, okay?
Thank you very much.
Please.
Don't forget about me, Madam Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-1033-Six-Ready Avenue. This is to extend an existing dormer and conform a living space on the third level. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Park, can you fade it out? Or somebody put you on mute? So what is the violation on this?
Madam Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to read into the record again. Sorry. Case BOA 103-1033-Six-Ready Avenue. This is a purpose to extend an existing dormer for access to conform to a living space on the third level. The violation is Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Brewer on the line? Is Mr. Brewer on the line?
Madam Chair, it looks like he's on there in the attendee list and unmuted, so he should be able to hear us, and we should be able to hear him.
Okay. Mr. Brewer, can you put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're proposing to do? Mr. Brewer, are you there? It looks like he's unmuted, but I cannot hear him.
Madam Chair, I see one raised hand. If the host could unmute, Danny Farhadi.
Okay, Mr. Farhadi, are you here in, to represent Mr. Brewer on Six-Ready Avenue?
Yes, I think somehow he's having a hard time, but I'm the homeowner.
Okay. So tell me what's being proposed.
Basically, from the second floor to the third floor, we are raising the existing dormer, which is on the third floor. Like, we are raising the existing dormer above the staircase, so we have the headroom. So you go to the third floor, and it's going to be a master bedroom with a bathroom.
Okay. Did you put the name and address on the record?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up.
Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yeah, the, the address of, I'm sorry, which address?
This is your home, the home address?
Yes.
Name on the record, please.
Yes, this is my house, in Six-Ready Ave, in Hyde Park.
Okay. So please stay on the line.
Sure.
Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are pretty minimal, but then the project is pretty minimal. So, Mr. Brewer, what's the ceiling height in the third floor?
Mr. Farhadi, what's the ceiling height of the third floor?
The ceiling height is around, the lowest point is around 6'4", which is because it's a peach... which is because it's a pitch slope. So that area, but the, the height of the thing is like, close to nine feet up there.
Okay, and, and is the living space extended to the area where it's 6'4", or is that storage?
No, that, that area is sloped, where the closets are, the closets. So the area, you know, you walk, and it's going to be around eight foot and up. It's very high ceiling on the third floor.
Okay. The drawings, the drawings are adequate, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. And a abutment was held, and there was no opposition from the community. So we want to go on record in support of this proposal as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calling a next case, will we get muted? Calling a next case, calling BOA 105-6627-179 Ruskindale Road. This is aligning a new two-family dwelling to an existing building. The violation is Article 69, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, but, so this is Ruskindale Road, okay?
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Layden Nordy. I am the owner of 179 Ruskindale Road. We have received approval for construction at ERT 928735. We have filed an amendment that refers to Article 69, one second here, 30-1, which will allow us to align with the existing structure on the street. I also own the adjacent property, 181 Ruskindale. And, I mean, the abutting property owner is also a part of the design process.
Mr. Nordy, can you hold on? What are you proposing to do with this building, 179?
This is a two-family dwelling.
Yes.
For our, for our family.
Yeah.
So we're resident.
This is an existing two-family dwelling?
No, this is a new construction.
This is a new construction, okay? And if it's new construction, it looks like you have FAR, and front yard setback is insufficient. But tell us, what's the required FAR in this district?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll defer that to our architect, who I believe has joined us on this call.
Okay, please, name whoever the architect is, put your name and address on the record.
Gerard George, 78 Lake Street, Hyde Park, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. So can you please fill in the details on this proposal? We understand this is a new construction proposed for a two-family. The floor area, area is excessive, and the front setback requirement is insufficient. Please tell us what's required and what's proposed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This project was previously submitted to DPA, and we received approval for the first design option, which was, did not meet the FAR requirement. Front setback, which, on BPDA review, we negotiated and recommended by BPDA to align front of the building with the adjacent properties, which would encroach five more feet into the front yard setback. And then the additional portion, which is another type of setback, ten feet into the front yard setback, which would provide a closed front yard setback of ten feet.
Is that modal front yard then? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
And then tell us about the floor area ratio. Did it increase due to this change in the location of the front yard?
Yes, the floor area ratio was adjusted, it's a 0.79 currently, because of the, the first floor increased by 10 feet, and the second floor increased by 10 feet.
So.
I'm sorry, five, five feet, correct. Five feet and five feet.
Can we get Jeff from the BPDA unmuted, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. We had approved this back under the original, the original design, and it is stated in our recommendation as such. And it was discussed with the applicant that, if you look at Ruskindale, it just made sense to bring this, to bring the building out that five feet.
Okay, thank you. Can we have Jeff unmuted, so that we can get the BPDA's opinion on certain projects? Thank you. So the plans were adequate, Mr.?
Yeah, the, the only issue was, is what Mr. Hampton was to discuss. But I understand that the, the set of drawings includes the BPDA's design review and approval, so the plans are fine.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. An abutment was held on Thursday, February 20th, and there was no opposition from the community. Since then, our offices received no emails, phone calls with any type of opposition. So we wish to fully support this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that can support?
Madam Chair, the secretary here. We have one letter of support from Abutment.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. Is anybody just here to speak in opposition? May I hear from Mr. Coleman? Have you, do you see anybody in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, just one moment to review the attendee list. Madam Chair, I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to, Mark Erlich, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 101-2933-91-Green Street. This is to construct an addition on the rear of an existing house to create an additional dwelling unit and garage. The violation is Article 80, Section 81-E-2, an application of the small project review. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. My address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And I'm representing Pauline Chen and Woody Halsey, who are the owners and residents at 91 Green Street.
So, please, these are a lot of violations. Tell us what's proposed.
Yes, the owners are looking to construct a small apartment for Pauline's parents to live with them. They're aging and need some assistance. The addition has been located to the rear of the house to minimize any change to the appearance from the street. We did meet with the abutters on December 4th of last year and had no opposition. Also, on January 13th with the Sumner Hill Neighborhood Association. And on February 5th with JP Neighborhood Council, which both of those groups also supported us. We worked closely with the neighbors and have also submitted letters of support. The, it's due to the shape and the size of the lot that we do end up with these setback problems. One of them is existing, we're not changing that.
So, Fahadi, I told you yesterday, and I noticed that the building has a rear addition, if you're looking at the house on the right-hand side.
Yes, there is an, there was an addition at some point in the past. I'm not sure when that was constructed.
And what is, what is the proposal? Is to continue it across the rear of the building?
Yes, into the side yard, that, they have a fairly large side yard right now.
Okay, and how many square feet is this proposed addition? Or this proposed unit?
The, the total addition, because it includes a garage, is 1,305 square feet. The apartment itself would be 630 square feet. Would have two bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms.
So for 630 square feet, it's two bedrooms? Because you know, the, the concern that we have is that if it's a separate dwelling unit, that in fact, what we approved goes with the land and not with the owners. So we need to just figure this out, because that looked to me to be a somewhat small lot. And you have, for 1,000, you have a lot of violations.
Yes, it's a 4,500 square foot lot. The allowable FAR is 0.6, and we are requesting a 0.71 FAR. The, as part of the design, there are some, there's a room that is designed to be for the two families to socialize together in, which could be considered part of the apartment. And that would push the apartment size up to, closer to 850 square feet.
But the second unit would have its own kitchen, et cetera. It won't, it will be an independent unit?
It will be, it'll have a very, it's a small kitchen, but it does have a kitchen, yes.
Okay, and tell us about the garage?
There's a one-story garage underneath the unit for the owner's use. The, the parents really want to be on the second floor. They didn't want to have an apartment on the first floor because of concerns with security and, and safety. So there is a garage underneath the apartment.
Mr. Erlich, how are the plans?
The, the plans are very nice. Did have one question that Mr. Burke raised. I assume you're referring to the family room as the one that would be potentially used by both parties?
Yes, that is correct, yeah.
I don't see, where's the access to the family room from the new unit?
From the stairway.
Oh, okay, so it's not, I mean, it's not really direct access?
It's half a flight up, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, I, okay, I, I mean, I don't think that makes sense to consider that part of the, part of the same unit, but I, I get it. Okay, the, the plans are fine.
Okay. Is anybody, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have nine letters of support from Abutment.
Is anybody on this, on this call? Speak in support?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santan. That's from Neighborhood Services. The applicant has worked closely above us and has received support from their immediate abutters. The applicant received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and also from the Sumner, Sumner Hill Association. So the mayor's office would like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record and support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody, Ed, do you see any hands raised in opposition?
Madam Chair, just a moment to review the attendee list, please. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Mark Erlich, motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 104-7749-3LARCHPLACE. This is seeking to erect a rear addition, also to renovate the property. The violation is Article 55, Section 12. The rear yard is insufficient. Required 20 feet, proposed 15 foot four inches. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Peter Bartash. Address is 207 Marion Street.
Are you the owner of the property, or are you the architect?
No, I'm the architect for, for the prop, for the owners here.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed?
Sure. So the owners, they currently live on the second floor of, of this two-family existing dwelling. The first floor is occupied, occupied by the mother and father of the woman who lives on the second floor and owns it. So it's fully occupied through their family. They have two daughters as well. And what they're looking to do is to expand the existing footprint of the building into the rear yard to increase their total living space, to provide additional bedrooms for their two daughters, and to just be able to stay in this house as their family has grown.
Okay, and so it looks, and can you clarify what the, what the zoning requires and what's proposed for the rear yard?
Sure, so the zoning required, let me just pull this up here. So the zoning requires, I believe that the zoning requires 25 feet of the rear yard. We are proposing, at its nearest point, 20 feet, four and three quarters of an inch from the rear of the addition to the rear yard line. And what we've done is, we've looked to the existing home that's right next door, which completed a similar addition recently, and set the extent of the proposed addition to be within the extent of where the other abutting home was extended, to try to keep and stay in keeping with what's happened in the neighborhood there.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Attorney John Haskell from Drago Tiscana as well. Thank you, Peter, for first starting that. Just to clarify, the rear requirements are actually 20 feet, not 25 feet.
And what's being proposed is 15 feet?
15 feet, 0.4.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarification. How are the plans, Mr.?
The, the plans, the plans look fine. There is a note from the BPDA, which says that the rear yard tree should be preserved, which contributes to the tree canopy, reducing urban heat island effect. So I guess my question for the architect is, I assume that means the tree in the current configuration would be remotely there? Do you agree or disagree with that judgment?
So, the tree that's in question is, there, there, there's a lot of existing mature trees along the rear property line separating this property from the park.
Is Mr. Hampton, is Mr. Hampton available to comment from the BPDA?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Erlich. As you probably heard earlier today, I, I wanted some clarification from the Ruskindale Planner, and I also got clarification from our landscape architect for the BPDA. And they both were adamant that they would want to see the tree canopy remade.
Just to retort to that, thank you, Mr. Hampton, again, Attorney John Haskell from Drago Tiscana. Drago Tiscana. At this time, our client is committed to replanting additional trees along the property line, to replace what would potentially be taken down. In addition, it's important to note that even with a smaller addition, the tree would have to come down for this family to increase living space via rear addition.
And there's no way for the tree to be trimmed, so that the most mature tree can be held in place?
It is a small pear tree in the rear of the property, it doesn't provide a large canopy of sort of tree coverage, so in its place, a larger tree could be planted that could add significant coverage to the area of the property.
And I'd also like, this is Peter Bartas, the architect for the project. I'd also like to note that the existing tree is currently in the shadow line of the existing home, and also well below the height of the existing tree canopy that sits along the rear property line. We haven't had an arborist go out and expect the health of the tree, or look at it more closely, but the tree does appear to be in sort of average condition.
Is it an ornamental pear then?
It does appear to be, yes.
Okay, so, Steph, Steph, thank you for showing us the plans, this is really helpful. So, Mr. Ehrlich, does that satisfy your question? Or satisfactory response to your question?
I'm not sure, it sounds like there is still some of a disagreement between the BPDA staff and the proponents, but, I mean, other than that, the drawings are fine.
Any questions for the board? Is anybody ready in support of the proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of...
Joe, you're cutting out.
Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
We would like to go on record in support of this project. We held an abutters meeting on February 19th, 2020. At that time, we faced no opposition from neighbors, and since then, I believe the attorney for this project has three letters that were of support, that were submitted on the record.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support?
The secretary here, we have four letters of support, and we also have the mayor's office and Joe Coppinger who just spoke.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please raise your hand if you're ready to speak in opposition. Mr. Haskell, are you speaking?
I'm the attorney for the project, Madam Chair.
Okay, because it sounded like he was speaking. Please, Mr. Coleman, can you check if there are any raised hands?
Yes, Madam Chair, one moment to review the attendee list. Madam Chair, I'm seeing raised hands from Lena Tramelli and Joe Coppinger, but I assume that it's not to speak on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Hearing that, may I have a motion, please?
I would check with the proviso, you mean the proviso, the tree canopy?
Can we have a motion for approval with design review, so that to include the selection and placement of trees for the tree canopy?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 103715784 Southborne Road. This is a small, single-level addition added to the rear of a single-family home, all-new construction to a house of a new kitchen. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the lot width requirement is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Lance Davis, 84 Southborne Road. I am the homeowner, and thank you, Madam Chair and board, for having me.
Tell us what you're proposing to do?
Yes, my wife and I just purchased the home last year, and are very aware of the small nature of the home, only about 800 and under 800 square feet over three levels. And we are proposing adding another 180 square feet off the back, to now we've modified the plans a little bit, not to house a kitchen, but just for additional living space for us, since the nature of the house itself is very...
Okay, and so, yeah, 180 square feet, and just on the first level, okay? Please stay on the line, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, I guess Stephanie is putting the plans up now, which is the first I've seen them. I had not seen them previously, so give me a second to look them over.
Can you hold on, Steph? Can we look at this for a minute? So where's the street on this? Oh, let me see, okay, can you see this, Mr. Ehrlich?
Yeah, hello.
You have an odd-shaped lot to begin with, then. This is a comment to Mr. Davis.
It is, it is an, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
It is an odd-shaped lot, it was non-conforming in the first place, the reason for our hearing. So, we are a very small community of brick houses that butt each other, so, most of the neighborhood approval on this, because the small nature of the house, it's not a tiny home, but 800 square feet over three levels, so it's about 300 square feet, that existing footprint.
Madam Chair, I'm having trouble scrolling down, I only see the architectural site plan. Are there more? Oh, okay, all right, now it's freed up, it was frozen. Madam, the plans look pretty straightforward.
Okay, is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant received general support from their abutters, and they received the support from the Woodborne Association and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The mayor's office would like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have three letters of support.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see a few raised hands, is anybody else in support? Is anybody else, is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I see a Sean Provinsor, he's muted, and a call-in, it's also muted.
Can we unmute them and see if they have anything to say, please? Mr. Provinsor, Ms. Provinsor, do you have a comment on this proposal?
If the host could unmute, Mr. Provinsor? Madam Chair, one moment, he's still on mute.
Madam Chair, the secretary, we have one letter of opposition.
And who is that from? Please, Mr. Fortune?
Yes, give me a second, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, it's from Julie Kaufman and Jeff Modest at 37 Bourndale.
Okay.
And it looks like it's in regards to a historic cottage in the Woodborne area, National Register of Historic Places.
Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any luck with, anybody who's here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we still have two raised hands, Sean Provinsor and a call-in, they're still both muted. If the host can unmute them, or if they're not here to speak on this matter, if they can unraise their hands. If the caller does not wish to speak on the matter, they can unraise their hand by hitting
Okay, can we ask for tech support to have these guys unmuted, these two people unmuted?
Yes, Madam Chair, just one moment, we're working on that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Provinsor?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Put your name and address on the record, and I'm assuming you're here to speak about Southborne?
Yes, I am. My name is Sean Provinsor, I live at 72 Southborne Road, just a few doors down from the project. And I'd like to voice my support for the project.
Okay, thank you.
This, the houses in this neighborhood are very challenging to work with, and this has been a derelict property for about 20 years. I moved in 10 years ago, and I'm thrilled that these folks bought the property and are trying to fix it up and improve the neighborhood, and I think the addition is also very respectful to the historic integrity of the neighborhood. It's appropriately sized and located on the lot.
Thank you. Can we hear from Colin User number 33, who's on the phone?
Hello, my name is Thomas Garrity, can you hear me?
Yes, please speak directly into the phone.
Hello, my name is Thomas Garrity. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
And my partner Stuart Walker and I are co-owners at 63 Bourne Street, direct abutters to 84 Southborne, and we are in support of the addition because, Mr. Davis, and we have agreed to having a foundation that would be the least intrusive and not damage a mature sugar maple that is on the boundary between the two properties. And Mr. Davis has agreed to not putting in a full or partial basement, and therefore we feel we can support this addition.
Thank you so much. Can I hear from Catherine Walker, please?
Hello, Catherine Walker, 76 Southborne Road, and I support this addition 100%. They've worked nicely with neighbors to try to accommodate people's concerns, and they're honoring a lot of the historical value of the neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you see any hands, Mr. Coleman?
Madam Chair, just checking for raised hands now. Madam Chair, I see no additional raised hands in the attendee list.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve what the design review is focused on, if the neighbors are concerned about.
Second.
Ed Devote, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, that's been approved with design review, good luck, and thank you to the neighbors.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 10493636, Crotown Avenue. This is an existing single-family rack, a one-story addition, 14 foot by 9 feet, has a front entry door and a stally 6-foot by 5-foot enclosed three-season porch. The violation is Article 18, Section 1, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gary Mattel. I'm sorry.
Gary, hold on a minute. In the meantime, can you put the plans up?
Sorry about that.
Okay, Steph, can you put the plans up? And Gary, please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Gary Mattel, under the 15 Brownson Terrace in Jamaica Plain, and I'm here representing a good friend of mine, Agron Demarche.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Agron, I've owned the property for five or six years. He's proposing just to do a three-season front porch enclosure for an existing landing and set of stairs at the front of his property.
Okay, and it looks like it's, what is it, how many square feet is it?
I believe 40 square feet.
Okay, okay, I'll stay on the line, Gary. Mark, how are the plans?
The plans look adequate.
I'm sorry, does that look like a three-season porch in the rear? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, the secretary here, we have one letter of support from the abutter.
Thank you. Steph, do you want to unmute yourself and please speak?
Good morning, Madam, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, just like to go on record to support. We had an abutters meeting back in February, none of the neighbors showed up, went to the neighborhood council in February as well, and received unanimous support, so just like to reiterate that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Favreto, from Council O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support? Anybody to speak in opposition? Can we hear from Colin User number 25? Anybody to speak in opposition? Ed, can you check the list, please? And can somebody text Colin User 25 to see if they're speaking on this project or not?
Colin User 25, yes, is unmuted.
Thank you.
If you're calling in from a cell phone, please speak your name.
Hey? Can you, Ed, does he raise his hands?
Yes, Madam Chair, one moment. Madam Chair, it looks like the call-in user put his hand down, and I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
One moment, please.
Oh, no, okay, Colin User's not. Colin User, can you speak up? Colin User number 25, can you please speak up? Is there a technical problem?
Doesn't appear to be one, the audio is functioning.
Well, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-7078, 47 LaSalle Street. This is to create a second-floor addition by raising a portion of the existing roof. Minor changes are to be constructed on the first floor in preparation for a stair between the first and new second floor. The building footprint will not change. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the wrecked, please.
Mr. Sarah, are you going to speak, or is Mr. Rubenoff going to speak on this project?
Hi, this is Derek Rubenoff. You can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is Derek Rubenoff of, Derek Rubenoff, architect, 82 Spring Street in West Roxbury. And we do have Mr. Juan Sierra available as well in this meeting. He's the owner along with his wife, Ruby Yao. I'm also a, I also live on LaSalle Street. I live at 101 LaSalle Street, so I'm literally the next block down from the house. And so it's really a pleasure to work on Ruby and Juan's house here, being a neighbor down the street. So the existing house is fairly typical of some of the bungalows around the area on LaSalle Street and some of the neighboring streets. It's rather small, and the rooms inside are quite small. And it's one of the smaller houses on these lots, which are quite typical. Most of the houses are two and a half stories. This one is one and a half. And they have a growing family. They're planning a growing family, and they would like to have more room. So they asked us to design an addition to add a second floor. The second floor would be recessed back from the first, the front of the first floor, so it would make less impact upon the street. And as you can see, there's a cascading gable right now in this existing drawing at the top left. You can see that the entry is a small gable protrudes out toward the street, and then there's a larger gable behind that. That's the existing condition. And then when we get to the drawing that shows the proposed, we're actually trying to do the same thing. So if you look at the top left at the drawing on this sheet, you can see that the second-floor addition would have a cascading gable, a sort of child gable inside a parent gable. That would be further recessed back another 13 feet or so from the front of the existing house. So the design of the addition would attempt to work within the architectural language of the existing house. And then we would carry the roof line of the first floor, the eve line, around the sides and the back of the house, as you can see on these other elevations here. So again, we're trying to make the addition seem like it doesn't have very much mass to it.
I think that's, what is the size of that addition? What's the square footage?
Sure, just one second. I'll bring that up on my screen. So the proposed second floor would be 644 square feet, and it would contain a master suite for Ruby and Juan.
And then the floor-to-ceiling height is, what's the lowest floor-to-ceiling height that's going to be usable space?
In the addition, it would be eight feet, and then most of the, in the bathroom, in the proposed master bathroom, the rest of, in the master closet, the rest of the proposed master bedroom suite would be a cathedral ceiling above eight feet.
Okay.
So there are some, yes, you're approaching 3D views here, which would be very helpful for you to understand what we're proposing. And so the side, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
We have a letter of support from the neighbor behind, and the neighbor where the side setback needs relief.
Mr. Rubenoff, hold on.
Sorry.
Anybody on the call who's here to speak in support? Jack?
He's muted, Madam Chair. The host could unmute him.
Can Jack Duggan and Peter Favrito be unmuted, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record as support. Yeah, we had in the Butters meeting back in February. There was no issues there, and also went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council last week, June 16, and received their support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter? Anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Mr. Favrito is, he's unmuted now. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Favrito from Councilor O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Mr. Coben, you see anybody in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I see no additional raised hands. Just a moment, if you will, to review the attendee list. Thank you. I apologize. It's a very small window. I have to scroll up and down throughout the entire list.
More power to you.
Madam Chair, I'm seeing no additional raised hands at this time.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-6617, 282 Purham Street. This is to remove roof and add a second floor, including bedrooms and bathroom. Violation is Article 15, Section 15-1. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the wrecked, please.
Is the applicant online, Mr. Petitpass?
With him. I'm the owner with him.
Your name?
Scott Tannenbaum.
And your address, please?
82 Purham Street.
Okay, tell us what's being proposed.
What's being proposed is a full second-floor addition to a rather small home on a rather small site. The existing site is 3,900 square feet. The existing home was 1,050, and we're doubling the size by an additional 1,050 for a 2,100 square foot home on a 3,900 square foot site.
And this is a single-family?
This is a single-family. Will remain as such.
Okay. How are the, please stay on the line. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody on to speak in support? Mr. Jack?
Yep. Good morning, Madam Chair. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record as support. Again, we had a Butters meeting in February. No one showed up to the meeting. It then went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on June 16 last week, and it was supported as well.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Favrito from Councilor O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody online to speak in opposition? Mr. Coben? I'm relying on you.
Madam Chair, I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
Hey, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
There's a second? Who made the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 105-3371, 160 Russet Road. This is to close the first-floor porch and add a sunroom to the second floor above it. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 56, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the wrecked, please.
Hello, by the way, Mr. Thomas Adak, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Thomas Adak, and I'm with my wife Alicia. We are the owners and occupants of 160 Russet Road. What we propose is to replace existing entry platform. The BRA stuff, we'll get to. Excuse me?
Yes, please go ahead. Tell us what you're proposing to do.
We are proposing to replace existing entry platform, which sits on a really crumbling foundation. And that's going to create like an airlock veranda kind of room. We don't, basically the building, the footprint will be exactly the same. And on the top of that, of the new entry, we would like to add another room on the second floor, which is going to create like an office for my wife, which, you know, she found out that she's going to permanently work at home. So that will be a really nice office for her.
So this is what you're calling a sunroom?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, how would, please stay on the line. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
It's a, it's a simple project. The drawings are adequate.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record as support. We had in the Butters meeting in April. None of the neighbors showed up. And it went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council last week on June 16 and received their support as well. Thank you. Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Peter Favrito from Councilor O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have two letters of support from the Butters.
Thank you. Anybody else on, anybody on this, on this call to speak in support? Anybody in opposition? Are you seeing?
Madam Chair, this is Ed Coben. I'm seeing no additional raised hands.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Mark Ehrlich.
Do we have design review on this?
It's really, it's really de minimis. I don't think so.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 102-6666, 30 Sturgis Road. This is to expand the living space in the back of the house where a screen porch currently exists, and expand and renovate the kitchen, add a bedroom on a second level of addition. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. Reconstruction/extension of a non-conforming building. Article 56, Section 8. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 56, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the wrecked, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Good morning. This is Khalil Farhat. I am the architect on this project here on behalf of the homeowners and residents Jessica and David Purdy. So what we are looking for here is to get a variance on the FAR. The side yard violation is existing, so there's no change to that. The current FAR, well, the allowable FAR on this property is .4. The existing is .46, and with this proposed renovation, it would be .54. So we're adding 397 square feet, and that would be over two levels. So the addition would be, would extend the kitchen on the back of the house. There is an existing screen porch. We would keep that footprint. The depth of that footprint, the 14 feet, would stay the same. Would widen that towards the existing bulkhead to create an entry porch and a small mudroom. And then above that, it would be a new bedroom, and we're adding a laundry room to the second floor.
Okay. Looks like a pretty modest proposal. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record as support. We had a Butters meeting back in January. A couple neighbors showed up. They were all in support. Then went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on January 21 and received their support as well. Thank you.
Peter?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Favrito from Councilor O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support for this project.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support? Anybody to speak in opposition? Mr. Coben, are you checking?
I am. Madam Chair, I see no additional raised hands.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the regular meeting for today. The next order is the zoning advisory subcommittee, which was held on Thursday, May 14, 2020. And I'm going to read each one into the record, and then we need approval afterwards. So the first case, BOA 102-9344, 56 Green Street, was to add a rear dormer and rebuild an existing second-floor deck. It was approved. Case BOA 102-9342, 16 Hill Street, was touching exterior roofline to a large front and rear dormers, interior remodel, a first-floor kitchen, and third-floor master bedroom suite. Structural header on the third floor to remove existing chimney. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 103-4626, 37 Dwight Street, was to construct a roof deck with roof hatches and construct a rear deck bolt exclusive to the unit. It was approved pending the Sultan Leamark's decision of approval. Case BOA 103-4625, 37 Dwight Street, it was denied. Case BOA 104-8227, 444 West Fourth Street, was to frame a shed, dormer, and in the front of the house. It was approved. Case BOA 1050-562, 13 Mill Street, it was install a deck on the top of the roof and deck on top of the garage, install one sliding door. It was approved. Case BOA 104-3218, 58 Rockney Avenue, was to construct a one-story bathroom addition. It was approved with the proviso that a bedroom, that the bathroom included a window. Case BOA 103-6733, 37 Melville Avenue, was an addition of a kitchen, a one-story remodel, three bathrooms, two kitchens, two staircases. It was approved. Case BOA 104-3432, 28 Roslin Street, was a use of premises for two parking spaces. It was denied without prejudice. Case BOA 104-6572, 11th to 13 Halifax Street, was a floor-to-air ratio, I'm sorry, interior and exterior. interior and exterior renovation of attic with dormers and new exterior windows. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 102-7608, 20 to 22 Bradfield Avenue, was adding two-car parking space in the front and removing the existing landscape. It was approved with BPDA and to reduce the curb cut to a 12-foot. Case BOA 102-9197, 96 Chesboro Road, was to construct a new mudroom, front porch and second-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 102-7233, 38 Lynette Street, it was an attic conversion and a master bedroom and bath. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 102-9202, 150 Sanborn Avenue, was a demo in existing right-side mudroom, reconstruct a larger and construct a new rear deck. Renovate basement, first and second floor. It was approved. And the last case, Case BOA 102-3357, 14 Thurlow Street, it was add a new second story, a new attic to an existing one-and-a-half-story house, an existing footprint. It was approved. That concludes the Subcommittee meeting of May 14, 2020.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to concur with the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can all board members stay on the line just for one minute and ISD stop so that we can see what worked and what didn't work so that we can tighten it up for next week? Okay, so the meeting is now adjourned. Quick question, what do you think didn't work? Because I know Ed and Kerry, and this is the first time for you, Terrell. What would you think would be more helpful to you?
Madam Chair, if I may, if we could go into a.